Yeah, we have a Republican up for three minutes. So we're going to do a prayer and ask Mr. Jeff Beal to come on. Yeah, there was a lot of gentleman going with the people taking more time. Just looking out, you just can't believe it. I think that we can't say, we're taking more time. Some board quit, he's like, bye, he's like, oh, our council committee. Even our community, we need to look at him as a higher degree. All right, thank you. For great father, become the president, please keep for the new blessed young. If we want, we realize if we could have a cabinet of health, we realize that we have this call. And thank you for all of the father and prayer, and then give every year in a family that way. Every point in my report, and we will die, that would make them rude. For these country, for these take the same thing, pray for the poor father, pray for the rich father, pray for the homeless, pray for the poor, for the poor, for the widow of law. Now, do you have a reason to be speaking without a particular? Father, we're working, and now, first, and we pray, and we pray some cases. Don't get worse and worse, please, and pray for a community, pray for a government, I would like to see what a good decision we make. I would like to pray. I pray for you to be able to discover, when it hits, we take the mouth of the father. I think that is taken from here, and now, you know, the honor of praying, you know, you pray.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dexter Armstrong.
Present.
Mrs. Kristen Chaskey.
Present.
Mr. Michael Chino.
Present.
Mr. Colin McGinn.
Here.
Mr. Jason McRae.
Yep.
Mr. Keith Mills, absent. Mr. Richard Arnoldo.
Here.
Dr. Chris Yelwyn.
Here.
President Lewis Kim.
Here.
Second. But Mr. Armstrong, we have a discussion, a question for the order, you have all his family?
Aha.
And a problem, we can say. That from the gentleman, I got your minutes from May twenty twenty two of me. I'd like to take that code, and that's been out of here, in the water they take me.
Okay, second motion.
With that, may I ask you, the discussion, question for the order, you have all his family?
Aha.
And a problem, what you hear. Be open, you can adopt the twenty twenty four rules of bill of table, but it's P E C. Say your name, please.
The opening of opportunity, seeing the address. Are we in line to see?
See.
So, uh, we opened bids for the routine of the education project on this one month. We received five bids, and the low bid was received by M-Track LLC, and we run one million five hundred and twenty-four thousand four hundred and five dollars.
You can work with several bills for this.
Don't move.
Move for exactly.
Okay.
I have one question, so we can follow.
Okay.
Uh, M-Track, where are you located? Better.
Uh, thank you, Ben.
Everybody.
He did, he did correct the one million five one twenty-four thousand four hundred and five dollars.
They done work, has gone, how they make this place, and then?
Uh, yeah, they, they have done work, and then, we are listening, so.
For sure, I'm just, just questioning.
We can, I can confirm that, and let you guys know.
So like, I like to get clarity, not on the phone and stuff, but basically, in this way.
Yeah.
Because I've seen Mr. Armstrong, his work in, maybe some, in Sacramento, that's. And I just want to make sure that, you know, you're saying, people want to know, we always talking about local people and all that. So if you were, you know, they have it on record, that where he's focused actually, it's still, we don't know if he'd work it, but.
Hey, what, when you bid something?
Yeah.
You don't have, you don't have, excuse me, when you bid something, you do not have a choice.
Yeah, for sure.
You're going to say a little bit.
I was just saying, but I was just saying, for clarity, for.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. No problem. We, we, we're not.
Got you, appreciate you.
Then what is crucial, this is how, well, I was talking to you about, uh, someone around until we get to the end of the meeting, if you'll still be around.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
But all the, this will be for Roger Richard, who could be over there.
He, they, they kind of, you know, whatever, it was not in there.
I, I tell you, that the public needs to understand, this is a partial, it's just packed, it's not. I take it a road before any, all the way down the end, it's just prepared. So, the case is less, and they can say, oh, we'll get a road, that's just giving bad spots to them.
We have a list of the loans that we approve every year. In my discussion, you have all his family?
Aha.
And a problem, what you hear, thank you. Recognition, self-proportion, and thoughtful work for common financial services, finance committee, Mr. Jackson.
Uh, is there a representative from Falkland Week for?
Yes.
We're going to get you to go first, and we're going to give Mr. Hare an opportunity to speak as well.
Happy to do that. Does anybody have a copy of the proposal? I believe everyone has gotten one at some time, but I guess copies of patient. All right, again. Okay, so, uh, my name is Scott Lazarone, I'm with Falkland Week, they're CPAs and business advisors out of Baton Rouge. Um, we have provided a proposal for accounting and financial consulting services for the parish. Um, the, the proposal itself is in front of you, so I don't want to read it again. I'm really here to kind of give a high level overview of kind of what we plan and what's in here, and answer any questions that anyone may have. So, um, I guess we'll start with questions, if anybody wants to, or I can just give a quick high level overview, whichever you prefer.
One quick, uh, attorney, is the service, do you recommend bidding hours again, or?
Now, you don't really have to bid it out, if it's a service, it's a good idea to do that, so you can find out what other people are doing. I would recommend that, because you don't really have to.
So you do recommend that we get it?
I would recommend, I mean, just to find out what other people are charging.
Sure.
Or RFPs, you know, get some other votes in.
Split for the poll.
But you can do what you want to do, I mean, that's.
Those are, you do it the wrong way. You're, you're putting the wrong thing.
If you're going to do something, do RFPs. Do not do this, because you're going to get, you're going to get the low bid. If you bid, you can do RFPs on the most far, I think, R F Q, you, you don't want, and it doesn't matter.
So it's pretty good, it's pretty good for the project, or you think it's serious?
How many questions, though?
Yeah, we have the RFPs.
All set.
I think y'all want, wouldn't?
I'm just saying.
I just would say that we want to give Mr. Hare an opportunity, to decide anything like that, just to be fair.
Yeah.
Yes.
We, 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 what do you say, for the critical part of the table?
You know, for, for what?
Well, we'll just wait, and we'll, we'll get three or four call rounds, because we get some people that will do it.
Do about five, about four, five shows.
Okay. I mean, we'll, 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 all the many, and, and things, just find people that will come up, that come this way, then we give them a proposal. Exactly. Yeah, well, I don't know, y'all, I would like to get all over back there, because it's not fair to.
You have to pay them.
It's not fair to all of them.
So do we want to table this, or do we want to answer questions while I'm here?
No, please, wait.
Okay. Okay.
Lewis, can I ask a question?
Yeah, if something might please.
Yeah. I guess I'll see y'all maybe next month or.
Lawrence Hofstadter, uh, I just want to know, what is the scope of this, you're doing, are you, are you basically, like, outside the, the, all your house? Are you going to not again, house, it's already?
We're trying, we're, I guess, okay, there's new software coming out, and we can work.
Okay. Because I know most of what was being done for, that being done in house, and then, with financial statements in the U N, were being done by contract, and then you would have auditors coming in. So what is the scope of this, even you're going?
We'll, we'll come up with, we'll send out an RFP.
Okay.
We got a list of tables, if that's please.
Yeah, just quickly, I may always say, the RFP would drive the scope, generally, the RFP says what the scope, so every proposal has an apples to apples comparison, for the same.
So that's, yeah. Okay, moving on, this guy takes actual request from public defender, for additional cases from Rhonda Covington.
Thank you, Rhonda Covington, from the Public Defender's Office.
Well, Mr. Jackson, would he want to take a, that, that proposal?
I didn't know about that, actually.
You said, governor's favor, and a poll, would you be there?
Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry, um.
Say your name, please.
Rhonda Covington, I'm the chief public defender, uh, for this district, and I have made a request to have the funds that y'all currently give me to be increased a little bit, uh, by twelve hundred and fifty dollars a month, additional increase. Uh, the money that y'all, uh, provide to us each month goes towards salaries of the assistant DAs in this parish. Well, we have a two parish district, but that money goes to this parish. And, uh, so we employ Michelle Duncan from Jackson, and Joseph Zawarchek from Wilson, who are our two attorneys here. And so, uh, because of the, the cost and things, that it's just very difficult, uh, to be able to, uh, to pay them enough in order to keep them, and we need to have good attorneys. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is it increased by, uh, twelve fifty?
Twelve fifty.
How did you come up with that number?
Well, it, the, the, it was thirty, thirty-seven fifty, uh, and, and I needed five thousand, uh, a, a, a month, so that's what, uh, increased by twelve fifty. So for a total of five thousand a month.
And we will go, we'll give forty-five thousand to sixty thousand.
Per year.
Yeah, per year, she asked for fifteen thousand dollars.
So, yeah, um, the attorneys, the captain, have been, been on board already, or is it a new attorney?
Oh, no, no, they've been on board, uh, Ms. Duncan's been with me for fourteen years, Mr. Zawarchek has been with me since he got out of law school, I think, six years ago. Uh, and so, this is just, uh, uh, whenever I made the, the request eight years ago, we were having a tremendous financial problem, and, uh, we were in restriction of services, and I was going to have to stop taking cases, and people were going to have to remain in jail, or, or, you know, something was going to have to happen. And so, y'all stepped up in order to help, and, and put in that forty-five thousand, which actually didn't, uh, cause us to have a waiting list or anything. We kept moving right along, the rest of the state got jammed up, but we didn't, and that little bit of money is what made the difference. Uh, now, uh, we've just, we've got some issues here, most of our, our funding comes from what we call cuffs, which is the, the user fees. And that is court costs, uh, bond, uh, bond fees and, and bond percentage, and the judges will sometimes order people to pay attorney fees who have, uh, are let out on probation or parole, if they go to prison, they don't have to pay that, but, uh, they have to pay court costs and so forth, that they're on probation. And so, uh, from that, from the court costs, the Public Defender's Office gets, uh, forty-five dollars per, uh, court cost that's paid. Uh, now, we have a lot of people here who go to jail, who are incarcerated, so they don't pay their court costs. Most of those court costs come from traffic tickets. Now, uh, the traffic tickets are camp, and, and in many cases are being, uh, what they call PTI, pre-trial intervention. And if some of you felt a bit stuck, you might know that, you know, where the, uh, in some places, the deputy will give you a ticket, and he'll give you a piece of paper, say, if you want to keep this off your record, contact the DA's office. And so, contact the DA's office, you can go through his program, he collects the money, he keeps it for his office, and none of the, uh, the stakeholders, such as Public Defender's Office, Clerk of Court, Judge's Office, Sheriff's Office, then, don't get a portion, a port of that court cost. So, we, we've noticed that there's been a, a decline in, uh, uh, these user fees. And there has actually been a decline statewide, uh, and a lot of that has been since COVID. During COVID, police officers did not want to stop people on white tickets, and, uh, you know, just for traffic tickets, so they would let them go. And then, after COVID, you don't seem to have the, the, the rise back up to the level that it was pre-COVID. And so, uh, our, our court costs go up and down, and they're not, they're not stable at all, and right now, they're on the way down.
So, good, uh, congratulations, that's what we're going to Monday, it's fortunate, but you answered it, versus the, how you get to the cost, or whatever, what the terms, that you catch up to that pitch, and, and.
And I have been with a judge, and I met with her, and she had two cases, and both of them requested public defender.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is to help the Indian people, she told me, I can't remember, I want to say she said maybe seventy-five, eighty percent of the cases need a public defender, you got to start hiring private attorneys, it's not, I mean, everybody's got to pitch.
So this is a recognition from the finance committee?
Yeah.
Would you please?
I just wanted to say, uh, they, they had a lot of confusion about what this Covington said about your traffic tickets and your PTI program, and it's very complicated. So a lot of that stuff you said about PTI and traffic tickets is incorrect.
Okay.
You're not obligated to fund the Public Defender's Office at all, so it's just your decision whether you're going to do it or not.
Yeah, he's correct, I, you're not obligated to do that, and y'all did, uh, do that for him graciously, and, uh, I do appreciate it. Now, if you're interested in what other places around the state can do, I can also tell you about that. Uh, most, uh, parishes now, uh, a large majority are providing the Public Defender's Offices with, uh, with offices, uh, and, uh, they utilities, things like that, that go along with that, telephones, internet, uh, you've got, uh, some places that are actually providing employees. Perfect case, let me tell you about, that just happened this, this last week, St. Bernard Parish, they have, in their Public Defender's Office, they have two, uh, ladies who work in the office, one's a bookkeeper, and one does secretarial work. Those two ladies have always been paid completely by St. Bernard Parish, and, and, uh, their full salary, as well as their, uh, insurance, retirement, all that. This past week, the St. Bernard Parish Sheriff's, I mean, uh, uh, government down there voted to pay for, to obtain, pay for health insurance for seven of his contract attorneys, these are not even employees, they're contract attorneys, and, and they're going to pay fully for their insurance. You've got, uh, other places, you know, like, uh, Baton Rouge, that of course gets, you know, over a million dollars from their local government. Uh, I think they get one point seven or eight million in Orleans, now, Orleans has got something interesting going too, and that's, they're going to try to pick that up in other places around the state. Orleans has something that they call parity, and so, if, say, they give a million dollars to the, uh, District Attorney's Office in Orleans, they have to give a certain percentage of that same amount of money to the District, uh, Defender's Office, to the Public Defender's Office. So that's something that may be catching on in some of the places. Another thing is too, and this is something that they're doing in North Louisiana, is that they're adding, uh, the Public Defender's Offices, uh, whenever they request increases in, uh, taxes, property taxes, so that they put them where they get some of the millage, and so, that's to try to give us another type of funding stream. We have, we have a lot of difficulty in coming up with, with viable funding streams.
And this is a credit answer to your question, our committee was a bit split about whether yes or no, we should add additional funding for these projects or not.
About your, where, where the funding will come from.
And that was some of the committee's concerns, and questions about it, and so, it's on the agenda, I guess at this point, it's up to the jury, yes or no. We want, I think, some of us wanted some bit more information about funding, where it's done from, and then about program, and thank you for coming and explaining that, so we all understand what we're voting on, or trying to decide.
Let me finish taking the proposal forward, I've been in court, and every judge that you can't afford attorney, who will come to you, what can be a public defender? I heard that they were another type of people, not the court, court.
I have one more question, I want to, um, I was listening to you as well, uh, have the workload, it's gone now, but you guys, this public defender?
Uh, no, sir, it really has not, uh, I mean, it, it, it ebbs and flows, sometimes you have, like, more significant crimes, such as murders, and sometimes those are on the, the down low, and so, it just depends. Uh, but, no, overall, it, it, I think, Mr. Dequella, you would agree with that, that is pretty much the same?
Well, the case load, uh, started going down a little bit in two thousand seventeen, the Louisiana State, uh, Louisiana Supreme Court keeps accurate records on your caseload and your tickets, which the tickets have not gone down, but some of the caseload has gone down a little bit. We used to range about thirteen hundred cases in East Louisiana Parish a year, we should, we'd range about nine hundred in West Louisiana, nine, West Louisiana's picked up, East Louisiana's kind of went down to like about a thousand or eleven hundred a year. So it's kind of a, like Mr. Covington said, it's kind of goes up and down a little bit, depending on your agencies. A lot of our town police are not making the arrests and sending them to the court system, that's where our court costs are really going down. Clinton used to send us about twenty-five cases a month, we may get two, Wilson and Norwood, while they used to send us about nine or ten a month, we're getting none out of them. Slaughter's handling their own cases, Clinton is handling their own cases, disturbing the peace, they're running a lot more through the town courts, than not sending them to us, therefore, our caseload's going down. So that's kind of why the funding is, I mean, that's funding, the caseload's going down a little bit.
And another reason why, uh, our committee was that we weren't real sure exactly what our balances were in our accounts that we have, so although we have money, we don't know exactly where that is from.
Do they increase?
So what that means, is if y'all not, y'all, are y'all recommending giving them this, or not, just, because you're not, it's not clear, you're not saying, you know, what you recommend?
Well, uh, what I remember about the meeting is, I'm going to tell you what, going to get some more information tonight at this meeting, which is as far as, you know, but there was no recommendation, one way or the other, to do, to do it or to not do it.
Well, you get the information from Miss Ronald.
That's right.
I spoke to a judge today, and she says, like I said, once they seventy-five, eighty percent of the cases go for the court here, ask for public defender. And then she said, their clothes are going down too.
Well, I just wanted to make, uh, to, I know we talked about budget before as well, I mean, we still got to figure out what we got for this working budget, I mean, we just come to these meetings and say, get money, get money. But when are we going to get, but when are we going to get our budget, so hey, we know what we're looking at, so we, like I say, we don't just want to run it out every month.
Most of the, most of the, get paid, but most, the company, we're, we're.
Yeah.
Everything, we, you know, that comes.
Yes, sir, yeah, but we realize, overall, it's, we want to know, you know, since we, they piss off, we have to, we have to give, she said.
The last numbers I saw, the office numbers, uh, through December third first, we had six hundred thousand dollars in June, June. All the other money is pretty much dead, paid through your road bridge, solid ways, it helps with it.
I wish you'd say, what, for the fact, really, from the right position.
That's good, good. Second motion, this, this, second motion.
I have a, before, before the final, we will find the American fund, fifteen thousand, uh, in the question, question for the order, you have all his family?
Aha.
And a poll, what you hear, we would like to.
Thank you, thank you so much, uh, thank you all.
Lewis, before you go on, just, continue, please.
Lawrence Hofstadter, uh, when you go on to the next thing, at what point do you start doing projections for your votes? Because you're, you now have five months worth of data for the current year, you should have a pretty good handle on what your expenditures are, what your revenues are.
We will have anybody workshop hopefully with that next month.
Yeah, I'm always working on that now.
Because when I was, when I was working for the hospital, by the fourth month, I had good data, as far as what our expenditures were, what our revenues were coming in. I was expected to come up with a fairly decent projection for the full year, by the time we got to the fourth half.
We will do it.
Right now, you're through May, you should have good numbers, you should start putting together things, where you don't come in here and say, we don't know where we are.
You're welcome. We're working with Texas, okay?
And I want to make clear that it's not that we don't have money, because we do have money, but it's the categories that is in right now that are confusing.
Okay, a question, let me move on, we will change it, if you, if that is, you're listening.
Most of you taking a lot of hold.
In this question, this is present of, of real, you know, power, you're going to.
Yes, sir.
Say it out.
Yeah. We have a motion, can you, can you, can I come first, too?
Sure. Listen, you make the motion.
Yeah. I'm going to, I'm going to, uh, just, I am, uh, in the place, it's not going to pursue. We will.
That's it.
And it's, uh, nonaffairs, and a poll, what you hear. Okay, this one is going to prove twenty twenty-four, we look like this for P A C O T, they cover fifteen, eight, fifteen one, how would you?
Seven.
Seven, second, and it's, this is on affairs, and a poll, what you hear. Set for the gentleman, who is the role for the mid, like, speaking, maximum, after that, great. The doctor, just a minute, if you don't say, who I've announced before.
So we have to take words in?
Yes, ma'am.
Y'all can go from table to the next meeting. Second.
Okay, the doctor, okay, our affairs, and a poll, what you hear, notice the vote on the, on the table, on the table. It's just for the doctor, who is the role for the mid, like, speaking, the maximum, after that, great. We have public here, no. We, what you hear.
Motion.
Seven.
We have a discussion, our affairs, and a poll, what you hear. Now, we have a discussion, having a proposal, right construction, not to see one thousand dollars, and you know, we have strong degrees from years that do collecting, and part of the website, and they were further, they were a fee of twenty-five thousand dollars, but it might cost more, you know, like, see the hundred thousand dollars. cost more, you know, a hundred thousand dollars.
I agree with you.
Yeah. This, this is the vernon.
That's the vernon, was already in, we're solving.
That's been there.
Since I. In the original quote we got on there, Jason, y'all love, we've added more stuff, just pile of stuff in there, just kind of say.
It was sixty-five thousand and I want to say what's it about twelve?
It's about twelve to be more.
Yeah. We just put a hundred in there, so we don't pay for it.
The branch comes back in, but definitely the rest of it's there.
Let's go back to number six. This is another message from our secretary. You know, Dr. Jim, we're, 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 we're accepting justice.
Number six?
For the same motion, you tell me.
I, uh, I moved to the same motion of number six for adoption of the adjusted military treaty.
Second.
You were discussing our favor. Ah, in the poll, what is this? I tell you, what the doctor, just.
I move to adopt it from adjusted military.
You know, they have a. We say.
We say it the first, you know. Second.
This question, our favor, ah, in the poll, what is this? That's it. Adjusted, adjusted military. And I'm starting, set forth the adjusted military to roll forward, not keep the maximum after last.
I got a question, Mr. Quillen. Can, can they adopt that without the rates?
Not sorry, was that? More attention.
You're going to favor. Number six, it says adopt the adjusted military rates. They table it? And August, you should have told me earlier that you can't table because it's timeframe.
It's timeframe.
So you have to re-advertise. How can they just, how can they adopt the adjusted military rates without helping?
Well, if the property value goes up, they can just say we're going to use the new property values on the same rate. You're actually, you're actually.
Okay, so, so we're good.
We're good.
Thank you, sir. Well, I can affect your advertising.
If we don't, we're.
So, so we're good.
But let's say, let's move on. Discussing the right of first, what we have to increase by, we have ten, ten thousand dollars, you know?
It's, it's pretty close, it's sixty-five, it plays about twelve, fifteen. I, but you remember, we went, went with a hundred, just in case.
Just in case.
We, we, we just wanted to see that, but we don't have to come out and stop with burn then.
You got a very tanky recovery, probably.
We're going to go ahead and burn.
Motion. Second. You want to discuss, could put all of it in the other place? Ah, in the poll, what is this? Committee staff report, the different committees, uh, the personnel committee, that crystal clear.
Um, we have added the line that immediately added to here about essential personnel. Uh, and all it says, all we added was all police jury employees or essential personnel.
And that will, that will take your FEMA. We have stolen, somebody's FEMA from everybody.
That's how we get our ready hours.
That's without doing things exactly like FEMA wants it, we won't get anything. So, so, and that will go on everybody's, um, job description.
It's just going to go in the, in the main one, where it says all parish employees are essential, don't need to go to every job description, go to not. Again, all involved, no matter where, where, what you classify, county clerk, public works, whatever, everybody's essential.
So you're saying we don't need to put it on the job description?
Not in everyone, I was telling.
You say all of them, all of them are essential.
All, all police jury employees are essential.
They draw check, you're essential.
Yeah.
Did it wash it off?
I move to make that all, all involved, essential.
Second.
Put it in, put it in, put it in, put it in, our favor, ah, in the poll, what is this? Finalist committees, count them.
We have two items. Item A is I'd like to make a motion to approve my invoices.
Seven.
Second.
You want to discuss, could put all of it in the notice paper? In the poll, what is this?
And item B is regulation approved general engineering contract P E C.
And this, this is one I spoke to you all, I showed you all, like, um, cost associated with who we use today and the savings that you will get using P E C. They don't charge as much per hour, and they don't charge company meetings.
I asked, um, Mr. Amorin if we need to advertise, but yes.
You don't, once again, if you can, if you want to, um, you, you, you had, you know, engineering firm, you have your day, and you have P E C, that's two of them, the numbers are vastly different. And there again, you're not going to be charged company meetings in this deal, but you get charged company on call rights.
Do we have to be out here, two, one, four, one, four?
Just tell them, third, the contract I saw, just tell people, thirty days, no. And the only thing I know they're working on is L W I. All the back of the work, no, not the L W I, I'm sorry, it's N R C S, N R, pretty quick and, uh, it really quick, and they're, they're out pitch. And just getting thirty days' notes.
Mr. Quillen, do we need to advertise?
It's the same thing we talked about earlier, about your RFUs. So it'd be a good, probably be a good idea to get some other quotes, just to have some other quotes from somebody else, but it's just up to you essentially, and you don't really have to do that.
Like I say, you have to already.
If you want another quote, you know, get another quote.
Be like, well, it's something.
Mr. Bu, you are probably going to be better, ask your questions about that, about your FEMA, but I think the FEMA is going to require, give the used for that, correct?
But they want to make sure you're not going with the highest one. Did you have a competitive?
That's only if your grant works, and we, and we know that, but this is, this is just a reputation thing here.
We just go to two, we got.
That's what I'm saying, you got, you got two.
You have to be high up, like there.
Yeah, I mean, well, FEMA, yeah, but I mean, this is not.
Your normal, everyday stuff.
And, and they have engineers that y'all pick for the L W I. And like I say, they, they do clinical, Jackson, Wilson, Norwood, Spock, they help you.
I'm going to make a motion.
To approve P E C?
Second.
Same. Do you recommend them to give another, that's your recommendation?
Well, I would say give another quote for RFQ or just another quote. If you have two already, you do it pretty good if you just have two, but it's just up to you if you're satisfied with that.
Well, then recommendation, I think, I think.
Well, you, you guys.
You're going to have to offer some, two motions.
We did, we did, we didn't have a special. You guys. Or can you, or can you?
I want to make a comment on my motion, I'm pretty about it, we do it here, we, you know, I know we have to be frigging with our money, and I know we got to be leaving, but sometimes we just keep turning that follow plan on and on.
Working down. So we move on, but you know, we can, we can, we can. A bit harder.
Is that?
Anybody's question, our favor? In the poll, what is this? We'll move a poll in this anyway.
All right.
Do you think that's it?
No, sir, that's it.
Probably what we're putting is just a question.
I don't have any further questions.
Good to practice, Mr. Richard.
I'm sure.
I'm going to stay with Mr. Garrett, David Amorin.
Uh, recommendation to hire Caitlin, what's your last name?
Versa J.
Versa J as an accounting clerk.
I have a question, uh, Samuel, I believe, just like earlier, could we go through the, um, I guess you said the application process?
This, this is who, you mission has interviewed before, and this is her recommendation, mine. This is both our recommendations.
Yeah, so we, you just said we did advertise.
We went through the same thing. The only reason I'm hiring, uh, family to the cost, Frosty took it.
For sure. So it's a recommendation. So, yeah, we, we got a recommendation, so if we do move forward, is when do you potentially have plans to start it?
She started with that, too.
Well, that's a recommendation, if we's already.
Because I was knowing that I wanted to hire. That's what I was told, yes, that's what.
So why do we have a recommendation?
Because y'all have to approve.
But it says recommendation.
It should have said, it should have said approve. But it should have said approve.
It's, it's like you, it's like you, uh, doing something, then ask permission for by, like.
Well, it, it should have said approve. I, I was told that we could hire who we want to hire. That's what I was told.
Well, I think this is why we, we.
And I said, we interviewed people, just like we were supposed to, interviewed quite a few. And I said, the only reason, only reason that I needed somebody, the only reason this office needed somebody was because Kelsey went to public work.
And you said, well, you did go through the proper situation. So here's.
We, we, we use a sign. We, we, it should have said, I, I didn't look into it, but we use a signing pool that Frosty interviewed, Jeff Williams interviewed, and Tricia found interviews, signed pool.
So I just want to get some clarity here before we move on, because I do have something I want to expound on this. As a president, I know this is my first term here, so when we have recommendation, and I'm, Mr. Amorin is our day-to-day operation guy, probably, um, uh, management part of it, so when we make recommendation, uh, he, uh, he's going to be able to just go in and hire and back it to the layup, because that's, that's a tip, because it's a memory that I don't want to be.
Well, that's, that's my goal in a talk to Mr. Cannon and Mr. Quinn, is that we hire the people in this office, and in public works everywhere, so you let Frosty hire who he wants to hire, you let your mission hire who he wants to hire, you let me hire who I want to hire. There again, that's, that's day-to-day in my mind. And that's what I'm tired of doing. When we go through the interview process, when we do the application process.
I don't have a problem with it, we go through it.
Oh, it went to rep, it, it went to rep, and we use this pool, I have against that. Jeff interviewed, you interviewed, and you mission I interviewed.
So basically, the terminology is.
That's right, yeah. And there, and that's one recommendation I have been in with Mr. Quinn already, is to change that in, in, in how we do it. There's no way that the people that work with us, the employees shouldn't have to.
We don't, we don't want to.
And then I, and I went to Mr. Ken, and I went to Mr. Quinn, and said, can we hire who we want to hire, we can change it. And they graciously agreed to say yes. And that's how we did it this time.
So I just, like I said, I'm just, we're in a meeting, I tried to be in a meeting, like, business, like, so in the future, if you say you will hire someone, we can hear and say, okay, no, then what happens? It's a, then everybody opinion before, so when we say no.
We're going to be hiring, you're going to say no.
Well, no, there again, we're.
Somebody that works for work, right?
This is a recommendation here.
But, but there again, it shouldn't be, Frosty should get to hire who he wants to hire here. We should get to hire who we want to hire here. And that's, that's the way it should work, because working employees is day-to-day. That's a day-to-day. And we did it, I've just named it, Jeff interviewed, Frosty interviewed, and you mission I interviewed.
I'll get you, just for clarification, again, like I said, we're sitting here, the people that are just watching this, they just don't see us, but I'm just, if you do that, and you say, hey, guys, I'm going to hire lady A or man B, and you do that, and say, hey, look, here's what we put on, and you say, here's an approval, I have hired this particular lady, so there won't be any confusion about the word recommendation, because it's only a suggestion and not a proposal.
And it's, it's, and you mission just sent a text, same terminology as the last two hours.
For sure, but we, that's what I'm saying, we need to, yeah, we need to look into changing, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm on the beat, because that recommendation, if people can mention that, be like, yeah.
My goal, my goal is to get y'all out of that.
For sure.
That's going to shape operations.
Yes, that's going to shape operations. And there again, y'all don't, y'all can't tell employees what to do. That's strictly prohibitive in y'all's rules.
For sure.
So that's moving forward, that's what we ought to do. And there again, I was told that I can hire whoever, Frosty can hire me, or hire.
No, we couldn't put it in the program.
That's right, I guess what it is, no, we go to them.
Oh, it, it went though, everything was done, just to drive the way shit.
I get everything y'all say, but I'm still stuck on the word. I need to take that out of that, we need to find a way to, yeah, move that out.
What's up? Mr. Bush, I'm sitting there.
John Richon. The problem with this whole process is, is you have to have a position. Positions have to be approved by a personnel committee. Frosty hired a motivator operator, we have four motivator operators. If he's short one, he's got a position. He's making a recommendation, basically, he's hiring a qualified person, they do things. Don't have a problem with doing that. But you also have a fair hiring practice, where you're supposed to advertise public jobs, and the only job we've advertised here recently is the building tech. The building supervisor. We didn't hire for an account, we didn't advertise for our accounting tech, we haven't hired, advertised anything over in public works, that I know of, because y'all have to approve the advertising, and the only one that's come up is the building tech, but you have to have a position to hire somebody.
And there is a position, there again. Kelsey went next door, and that was left a position here, and that's what she was hiring.
So was it advertised?
I asked you, Miss, let's say.
Was it advertised, Frosty?
I know, I know, I know.
Everybody, I was told everybody was advertised. It was advertised on Facebook, it was advertised on Facebook, nothing you said.
That's not your journal.
Advertised, I'm not pushing on her.
I made the motion, I guess.
All second.
You want to discuss? You question, what, what?
Mr. Lewis, I just, uh, y'all brought a good point, I mean, Facebook's one complaint, but I don't, that's official.
It's not an official journal.
You said, you said it was an official journal. It was, I'm just kidding, okay, so if she, she went out more than I'm, more than I'm saying, I, 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 I don't do that.
He had taken.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Mr. Amorin says, that you, she said that it was in the official journal, is that correct, Mr. Amorin? That's what she just said.
That's what I was going to say, too, it needs to be in the paper.
It's in the official journal.
What did Frosty, we have time, they have a, that's a recommendation.
You hired him, suspected him.
More to do. Our favor, in the poll, what is this?
You brought this to point, you thought.
Good, thank you, much. I have a question.
Thirty-fourth, we come, hold it.
All right, Darrell viewers, I just, uh, two things. All sites have been GPS, we went back last week and went through all the sites again to see if anybody has put out more debris. A lot of them over there on Plumby or Drive and Hermidus, they put out more debris that was in their backyard, so we GPS everything there, and we have over three hundred sites right now that we GPS for debris that goes. And. And we have the approval to do it all with a seventy-five, twenty-five cost share, and the cleanup was started June ten. They're coming in, provided the weather allows, but right now they can't even get into the site for a redwood creek clean out, because they're up toward nineteen up there right now cleaning. And it's so muddy, the trucks can't even get in there to do it right now. But that's all I got right now.
You're quick with the good.
I have a question for you. Do you know when the debris pickup is going to happen? Like I know on Facebook, it said Clinton and water will start today.
No, that's going to be the ten. June ten.
Having done Jackson already? Having done Jackson?
No, Jackson and Clinton, the only one. There's no towns involved in that. Smarter didn't have enough debris to even worry about, and, but everything else is parish, and fortunately, uh, we didn't have to worry about the state roots, because they get it probably twice the amount of debris that we had. So we were fortunate with the storm run in parts of parish.
They said that ten.
Yeah. Now, that date can go up a day or back a couple of days, because officially start the first time, we take the truck and reach over there and grab the debris. We have ten days to get it off. Last month, on the storm we had, we couldn't get it in ten days, because we couldn't get into the site for three days. So we notified, uh, Jim Rishard, who had go sell, and he said, yeah, everybody's having that problem, so once he got drive, we moved it in.
Okay, let's move on. Commission board report, ten dollars. Of course, you can make it. A cost share is set for two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Second.
All the paper?
Ah.
In the court.
Just press.
Now, say the board, we've got the proof tonight.
Y'all want to prove planning is only public hearing. That's the first time it's ever been on there, and I don't know what changed, but we set public hearing.
But.
Happens, and then when it gets to y'all, y'all have to do another public hearing. That's the one you control. So. No.
I'm saying, you claim the double.
Yeah, but I don't make the agenda.
A and B is by no action.
The recommendation approved.
Second.
Go call vote.
Just got the text out, because A and B was for information.
Okay. You got, you got it blue. You heard it, you blue.
Mr. Dexter Armstrong?
Yes.
Mrs. Kristen Chastain?
Yes.
Dr. Michael Cheetham?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Jason McCray?
Yes.
Mr. Keith Knowsley, absent? Mr. Richard Alaba?
Yes.
Dr. Christiowa?
Yes.
President.
They will come with the. Probably come. You probably come.
Second.
We all have here.
Laura Socks, um, I wanted to ask about doing more recycling. We had one recycling where it was just electronics. What I've learned is there are certain things that cannot go to the landfill, and I'm kind of at a loss as to what to do. I know East Baton Rouge Parish has hazardous, hazardous chemicals and hazardous stuff that they do like twice a year, and I'm wondering, can we put something like that together in this parish? Specifically, uh, I now have two microwaves that I can't do anything with. I can't get rid of them. Um, I've got O T V, I've got fluorescent bulbs I'm not supposed to throw into the trash, I've got batteries I'm not supposed to throw in the trash. Can we find some way of parish can?
They're just gonna, instead of this.
Sorry, we'll use Alakala D Q.
We think, we think. We think of paying for everything.
Well, and, and the thing is, um, we don't have to recreate it. East Baton Rouge Parish is already doing it, so if we can find out how they're getting their vendors, that would help. The other thing is, I am hauling my recycling to Baton Rouge probably every four, six weeks. And I put my garbage out on the street every week. I put less than a thirteen gallon bag at, at the curb. I haul every to Baton Rouge, because I don't have anywhere in the parish bring my recycling. So that's another thing. If you want to cut down on what we're hauling to the, you know, giving to the contractor to haul to the north landfill, one way to do it is set up a recycling program. If nothing else, give me a place where I can haul. I will haul it myself. You don't have to come and get it. Just, I hit driving thirty miles with my recycling. So please.
And that has to be addressed in your garbage contract, and typically twenty percent of the people recycle.
And right now, we have no way of dealing with it.
But there is, it's, it will become a numbers night, because your garbage pickup will go up. And it just, you know, some, we, we get information off.
We'll talk about it.
Let's see.
We'll talk about it.
Okay. Thank you.
I want that for me. I want that every year. Get your gentleman, go with your gentleman before you come to a meeting, we don't discuss. There was so much care after, because. That was one way to. Get your thousand dollars before you come to the state. Get your gentleman, come on, you're with her, it's. It was totally, it's very modern. You don't solve it, you won't come to discuss, okay? You get that step, it's our job. Okay, I go with that. Are you? We're going to come to that, we don't, okay?
I have, I have one thing, it's just, uh, a compliment, Mr. President. Just want to thank everybody that's in this office over there, Mr. Davis, Ms. Kelsey, thank you guys, and we have to say it lately, and last but not least, thank you guys, and Mr. Frosty, because I've called him for certain things. And you, Mr. Amorin, they have been taking care of, I just want to say thank you guys to all the employees, especially those over there. They say what you're doing, thank you.
I'm going to thank you. They have, they have, you will.
Well, and, and let me just comment on Frosty and the other, uh, they've done an outstanding job, they can pick it up. And, and the past, what they've been asked to do is tremendous. We finally got both trash trucks up and running for a while. And I think they still are, so, you know, they, they do a great job with the equipment they have, and, and, Mr. Armstrong, I greatly appreciate the comments to them, they, I'm, I'm just, but I appreciate it.
And what, what.
You got a comment, Mr. Frost?
And one last thing with the, with the grass cutter, with the boom gun, with the side cutting, then y'all just run them in the ditch and deal with that, look like the way you cut it with that boom gun, man, because you're getting a lot of compliments about when you guys keep the side of the road, and we appreciate you.
Well, I'm, I'm very glad that you just made that comment, because Mr. Frosty is trying to fix one of the boom tractors right now, so since you're doing a good job, maybe we'll be able to get that passed by pretty quickly, Frosty. We, we get cut beyond scouting.
Okay, I want to make one more comment. I, I want, I didn't write this one down, so I forgot to say. Um, I have a trash pickup that I requested back in December, and it took three weeks for the truck to come and get it because it was open. Then I had limbs, but I had to haul up, and it took three, four weeks. And every time it was, they had to come here and get permission to get money to fix it. If you've got budget set up for maintenance, and they don't exceed their budget for making these repairs, you can, you can send it to get the fix done immediately rather than waiting for the next meeting. That's ridiculous that you have to wait two, three weeks just to get permission to send the truck again to get repaired.
I agree. I agree with that.
Excuse me, sir. Can I get your address?
One, two, three, ninth Kingsview, Sur.
You know, come.